Saving power comes from the blood. It flows steadily.
Oh, healing power.
Comes from the blood. It never fails.
Saving power.
Comes from the blood. It flows steadily.
We shall never. Oh. Shall never lose its power. Shall never lose its power. Shall never lose its power. Never lose its power. Oh. Shall never lose its power. Shall never lose its power. You are holy, Lord God Almighty. The earth is full of your glory. You are holy, Lord God Almighty.
Oh yes.
The earth is full of your glory. You are holy, Lord.
You are holy.
Ayana na ne.
Lord God Almighty.
The earth, the earth.
The earth.
Is full of your glory. Yes, you are holy, Lord.
You are holy.
Lord God Almighty. Oh, the earth, the earth.
The earth is full of your glory.
Oh, you are holy, Lord.
You are holy.
Oh, the earth, the earth.
The earth is full of your glory.
Oh, you are grateful, Lord.
You are holy.
You are holy.
Lord God Almighty.
Oh, the earth, the earth.
The earth is full of your glory.
Say you are holy, Lord. You are holy, Lord. Oh, the earth, the earth. Oh, it's full of your glory. Oh, you are holy, Lord.
You are holy. Lord God Almighty.
Oh, the earth.
The earth is full of your glory.
Say you are holy, Lord. Say you are holy, Lord. Oh, the earth.
The earth is full of your glory.
Ayana ne, kaya ne, sata ne. Kaya no, sata ya ne. Eya ne, kaya ne. Eya na ne, ya na ne. Eya na kaya ne. Ekaya ne, sata ya ne, kapaya no. E ra da na, e sata ya ne, kapaya. E ra baya no, sata ya ne. Rika ya ne, sata ya ne. Oh, ra da ya ne, sata ya ne, kapaya. E na ne, ekapa ya ne, sata ya ne, kapaya. Rakapa ya ne, sata ya ne, kaya. E sata ya ne, kaya ne, ya na.
You are holy.
Eya na 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 na.
The earth is full of your glory.
Ekana na na.
We say you are holy.
You are holy.
You are holy.
Lord God Almighty.
The earth is full of your glory. E, you are holy.
You are holy.
You are holy.
Korra da ba baya, sata, ra da bo sa.
The earth is full of your glory.
Is full of your glory.
You are holy.
You are holy.
You are holy.
Lord God Almighty.
The earth is full of your glory.
Is full of your glory.
You are holy. Wherever you are, just raise up your hands and worship. You are holy.
Korra da ba baya, sata, ra da bo sa.
The earth is full of your glory.
You are holy.
Just out of the way to flaps, you know. Wherever you are, just worship Jesus. He deserves your worship, he deserves your worship. Show him some love, show him some love. Karida baya, sata, karida bo sa. Karida ba baiza, karida ba 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 ka, sata, karida bo sa. We worship you, Jesus. You worship your Holy Spirit. You are wealthy, you are wealthy. You are wealthy. We just wanna say we love you. We just wanna say you are wealthy, you are wealthy. Karida baya, sata. Karida ba baya, sata, karida bo sa. We thank you, Lord, for your love. We thank you, Lord, for your protection. We thank you, Lord, for your patience. We thank you, Lord, for your word. Let's say that. We thank you, Jesus. Karida baiza, sata, karra da bo sa. Korra da ba ba baya, sata, ra da bo sa. Just show your Father some love. Just show your Lord some love. Karida baiza, sata, karida bo sa. If you can speak in tongues, speak in tongues. If you can pray in tongues, pray in tongues. Before we start this session, we should worship his holy name and tell him that, "Lord, you are well done for your praise. Lord, you are well done for your worship. Lord, Lord, Lord." Korra da ba baya, sata, ra da ba ka, sata.
E na na na.
Karida bo sa, sata. Karida baika, sata. Karida ba 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 ba, sata, karida bo sa. We love you, Jesus. We love you, Lord. We love you, sweet Holy Spirit. We love you, sweet Holy Spirit. Korra da ba baya, sata, karida bo sa, sata, karida bo sa.
You are holy, Lord God Almighty.
Is full of your glory.
The earth is full of your glory. Are you, Lord God Almighty? What is your name? What is your name? You are holy. Are you, Lord God Almighty? What is your name? What is your name? Say you are holy. Say you are holy, Lord. Are you, Lord God?
Are you, Lord God?
Oh.
Almighty.
What is your name?
What is your name?
What is your name?
What is your name?
Say you are holy. Say you are holy, Lord. Are you, Lord God?
Are you, Lord God?
Almighty. What is your name?
What is your name?
What is your name?
What is your name?
Say you are holy. Say you are holy. Are you, Lord God?
Are you, Lord God? Almighty.
What is your name?
What is your name?
What is your name?
What is your name?
Say you are holy. Say you are holy, Lord. Are you, Lord God?
Are you, Lord God?
Almighty. What is your name?
What is your name?
What is your name?
What is your name?
Oh.
What is your name, my God? Blessed is thou before thine throne we come. Blessed be thee, he who dwelleth upon the most high places. The stone which is above every stone. The giver of life. Before thee we come. You are holy. And we sing, "You are holy. You are God Almighty, in whom we are sustained." Blessed be your name, Almighty. Glory be to your name, and we shout amen.
And the number of elders who've got the numbers, follow. And all of them are saying three and one. Holy, 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 and holy. This is the Lord whom we are worshiping tonight. This is the Lord whom we are discussing about. The Lord whom we call upon, the holy one in ancient days. The Father and the Lord, the Creator and the giver, the blessed and the one that will make a difference to being alive.
Amen.
Welcome, my friends, to Hawaii.
I'm glad you're here, Mr. Howard.
I'm good. This is all us who have been in Hawaii. They, 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 they are completely, completely silent.
Ladies.
What do you think?
About? What I am saying about what is? Our lives are transformed through this wonderful ritual. We can see tens of rags at each moment in time when we hear such problems. So I believe that we are still continuing in the Lord's role. He has given to us this title of young prayer messenger.
Amen. You know, if maybe we go across to the United States and then there is a speaker that also joined with the prayer line and the testimony I saw it already on our WhatsApp posting on Facebook. On Sunday, he gave a reading, posted the love CDs and all the things. Ever since I have been looking for a job, right, and a job for anything, you say the CVs, it's only the interviewers that has the power to tell you how the interview is gonna be done. But she had cases, she said, "I don't have money for transport. Can we do the interview with this one?"
Oh yes.
Then it was done with this one. Amen. How, how done? This is the God whom we worship. The God who is doing the work. The God in whom we are sustained.
Ladies. I am telling you, my friends, that we are going higher and higher each moment in time when we hear such problems like this. I remember last week, I even heard a testimony related or even formulated just by watching the content throughout different social media platforms. So please allow me to tell you that this is not a program to play with. People must take this for granted. There is power, it is your character. And I tell you that people can continue to follow this channel. Their eyes will ever be set.
You know, just today is one very, very wonderful topic. Today we are going to be playing, and we're gonna be learning a lot about how to empower all Mounties.
Yes, the grace of God, the creation, and the increase.
Hallelujah. Go and create with the best kind, and you see, be blessed and be fortunate.
Amen.
The, 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 the.
You see, the move of the essence, in every space that's where you are called of the man, you're held to the full of your light. But it takes special, this is the second grace that you need for you to be able to walk the line of your creation.
Oh yes, every person is gonna lead us in this song. We will go before the Lord as seek for his grace of forgiveness, the grace of forgiveness, and the grace that is powerful for us to be able to modify as we may.
So, my friends, the grace is there, and walking creation is there. The grace is there. But for you to get that to the walking creation, it is the second grace that you might have to learn.
Oh yes, Christ.
Magabongwe.
Jesus magabongwe. Magabongwe.
Magabongwe.
Maga, maga, magabongwe. Magabongwe. Hallelujah. Magabongwe.
Magabongwe. Magabongwe.
Hallelujah.
As the scriptures have said.
Amen.
Be fruitful and replenish the earth.
Amen.
We need to go before the Lord and say, God, give us that grace. God, give us that power. Give us that serenity. Give us that opportunity to reproduce the fruits that are of your kind that we can replenish the world. Can we go before the Lord with ourselves and say, God, we need that power. God, we need that grace. God, we need that opportunity to be productive before you. Oh Lord, we come before you.
We worship you Lord God Almighty.
In the name of Jesus.
Father God, here we are.
Here we are as children.
We cannot sustain ourselves. If we are not productive in the station. The grace of multiplication.
Oh Holy Spirit.
Of interest my Lord. We need that grace my Lord. We need that grace.
We know that you show up for heaven.
We need that grace.
Show up and show Almighty God.
May that grace locate us tonight. May that grace locate us tonight. May that grace locate us tonight.
Asking for the grace to be fruitful.
May that grace locate us tonight. The grace of multiplication. The grace of multiplication. Let it locate us.
Allow us to be fruitful.
Let it locate us.
Holy, holy.
Let it locate us. God Almighty. Let it locate us. God Almighty.
In the name of Jesus.
Let it locate us.
Oh yes.
We are praying for that grace. We are praying for that grace my Lord.
As a Lord we cannot break.
We are praying for that grace my Jesus.
We need you.
We are praying for that grace my Lord.
We need you God.
We are praying for that grace my Jesus.
We need you God.
We are praying for that grace.
Take us to the next level. We need you God.
We are praying for that grace.
Now we need you God.
We are praying for that grace.
For that power of yours.
Let it locate us tonight. Let it locate us Lord God Almighty. Let it locate us Holy Spirit. Let it locate us my Jesus. Let it locate us our Holy Ghost. Let it locate us. Let it locate us. Let it locate us.
You are the one.
Let it locate us my Jesus.
Oh God of grace.
Let it locate us my Jesus.
Oh God of grace.
Let it locate us.
In your presence we come. Oh God of grace. In your presence we come. In the name of Jesus.
In the mighty name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. My pastor.
Yes Baba.
The multiplication is already there. There is a certain grace that must locate us tonight.
Yes.
For us to be able to multiply.
Yes.
So in other words, when I have a business, that business, it's supposed to multiply.
Multiply.
But for it to multiply, there's a certain grace that must fall upon my life tonight. Increase is already there.
Yes.
But there's a certain grace which is needed in my life for me to be able to obtain that increase.
You know man of God as you are saying, I'm thinking of Jacob. By the time he was in the house of Laban.
Oh yes.
Laban say it, when Jacob was already left with his children, with his camel, with everything. Laban followed and say, Jacob, I have learned through deviation that I was blessed because of your presence. There is a power that we have, that is the world must also feel. That the world must be blessed because of the grace that we have. The grace to bless, the grace to multiply. That grace tonight, we want the concentrated grace that will make even our surrounding not to understand where it is coming from.
And remember the book of Mark says.
Yes.
These signs shall follow them, that believers. So for us to be able to have and to carry that grace tonight, one must be able to believe.
Yes.
So we want to go before the Lord again and say, Lord God Almighty.
Oh yes.
Locate us, let this grace, the grace of multiplication.
Oh yes.
The grace of increase. May it locate us tonight in the name of Jesus.
Oh yes.
Open your mouth somebody and begin to pray. Say, Lord God Almighty, may this grace locate me tonight. The grace of multiplication. The grace of increase. May it locate me tonight in the mighty name of Jesus. May it locate me tonight. Let this grace of increase. Let this grace of multiplication. Let it locate me tonight. Let it locate me tonight. Let it locate me tonight. Let it locate me my Father. Let it locate me Lord God Almighty. The grace of multiplication. The grace of multiplication. The grace of increase. Let it locate me my Lord. Let it locate me my Father. Let it locate me Lord God Almighty. Let it locate me Lord God Almighty. Let your grace of increase my Lord. Locate every viewer. Let the grace of increase. Locate every viewer. Open your mouth and say, Lord, this grace locate me. Open your mouth and pray. Say, Lord, this grace locate me. Lord, let this grace locate me. Lord, let this grace locate me. The grace of multiplication. The grace of increase. The grace of multiplication. The grace of increase. Let it locate me. Let it locate you. Open your mouth and pray. Open your mouth and pray. Say, Lord, let this grace locate me. Say, Lord, let this grace locate me. Let this grace locate me my Father. Let this grace locate every viewer. Let this grace locate me. Let this grace locate you. We are praying for the grace of multiplication. We are praying for the grace of increase. Let it locate us tonight. Let it locate us tonight. Let it locate us tonight. Let it locate us tonight my Lord. Let it locate us tonight my Father. We are praying Lord, let your grace locate us. We are praying Lord God Almighty. Let your grace locate us. Let your grace locate us. We are praying Lord God Almighty. Upon every viewer, let that grace locate them my Lord. Every believer, let this grace locate them my Lord. Let this grace locate them. Multiplication, multiplication. The grace of multiplication. The grace of increase. Let it multiply. Let it locate them. Let it locate them. In Jesus my children.
Even if you are watching us live.
To Jesus.
Using your phone, on your TV, on your tablet, on your computer. Tonight is the day that the Lord has made. And that's the day in which he has assured us that surely, surely, we are going to be given that grace to multiply.
Oh yes.
In the book of Matthew, the word says, as Jesus was departing, say, go ye therefore and make disciples of all nations.
Oh yes.
In Genesis, when God created men, he said to them, be fruitful and replenish the earth. Now Jesus was also talking along the same lines. When he say, go ye therefore. He gave us that power when he say, go.
Oh yes.
And make disciples.
Oh yes.
The disciples are the children of Jesus. The disciples are the children of Abraham also. So Adam was given power to replenish physically. But Jesus gave us even power to replenish spiritually.
Oh yes.
What do you have to say man of God?
So if this grace, man of God, can locate us tonight, it means if there's any stagnation in anyone's life, it will be automatically removed. Because remember, it is a grace of multiplication.
Yes.
It is a grace of increase. So if there's anything that hinders your multiplication, automatically when you receive this grace, that evil spirit will move away. And remember, in the book of Genesis, the Bible says, let there be light.
Hallelujah.
So automatically when the grace locates you, it means there's a light, a shining light, which will be moving with you in your everyday life.
Funnies, you know, in the book of Deuteronomy, chapter number 29, verse number 29.
Oh yes.
The Bible says, the hidden things are for the Lord.
Oh yes.
But that which is revealed to you.
Oh yes.
Is for you and your children, and your children's children.
Oh yes.
So this is a revelation that is before us, that we are supposed to multiply in all angles. And the God has given us this revelation because it is for us. We are the ones to multiply. We are the ones to replenish. Multiply spiritually, multiply physically, multiply worldly wise. It's a revelation. It's an information that the God has given us. So we need to go before the Lord and say, God, give me that knowledge. Give me that power. Allow me to multiply in the areas that you see fit.
Oh yes.
Please team you can give us a song as we go before the Lord. We need this grace to multiply. This grace we wanted in its density.
Oh yes.
Oh yes, Jesus. We have come to draw. Draw, draw, draw from you again. And we have come to draw. Draw, draw, draw from you again. We have come to draw.
We have come to draw.
To draw.
Draw.
To draw.
Draw.
To draw from you.
Draw from you again.
We have come to draw.
We have come to draw.
To draw.
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 Draw from you. Draw from you again.
We have come to draw.
We have come to draw.
To draw.
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 From you. Draw from you again.
We have come to draw.
We have come to draw.
To draw.
Draw.
To draw.
Draw.
To draw from.
Draw.
To draw from you.
Again. Yeah.
Eke, eke, eke.
We have come to draw.
We have come to draw.
To draw. Draw from you.
Draw from you again.
Again. We have come to draw.
We have come to draw.
Eke, eke, eke. For as we come before you. As we are coming before your throne. Yakata kavuriyeje. Ayakavokosanu. Eke, eke, eke. Oreke, keke. Orakata kavosekana. Yekatari avosonja. Ababambo. Enzimina se revelen. Disrevelen se nespele. Disrevelen se nespele. Disrevelen se nespele. Revelen se nespele. My God, you've given us.
Sheetaka padu.
Therefore, therefore, my God, allow me to witness this. Allow this revelation, my God, to be ministered to us. Allow this revelation, my God. Be the one that shall serve us in the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. Oh my God, as we come to your throne. As we come to your throne. As we come to your throne. As we come to your throne, my God. As we come to your throne. As we come to your throne, my God. As we come to your throne. Yakata kavuriyeje. Reke, keke, buria. Rakata kavoriyeje. Rikata kavosekana. Rakata kavuriyeje. Bababambo, bababambo. Nega tiboni. Nega bababati. You are the Lord in whom you are. You are the Lord who gives us. Eke, 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 buria. Eke, 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 eke. Rikata kavosekana. Jakavu rakavati. Rakata kavuriyeje. Ayakavu horiyeje. Bababambo. Nega tiboni. Let you be my God. Let you be my God.
Rikata kavu.
Let this side.
Rikata kavu.
Oh Lord. My God, my God, my God, my God. In the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus.
Rikata kavu. Eke, keke. Sheetaka padu. Rikata kavu. Rikata kavu. Shente kese kavu. Rikata kavu.
Bababambo, bababambo.
Rikata kavu. Rikata kavu. Rikata kavu. Rikata kese kavu. Rikata kavu. Ayayaya. Rikata kese kavu.
God of love. God of mercy.
We have come to draw my Lord. We have come to draw Jesus. We have come to draw my Jesus. We have come to draw my Lord. We have come to draw my God. We have come to draw my Jesus. We have come to draw from you my Lord. We have come to draw from you my Jesus. We have come to draw my you my Lord. Rikata kavu. Rikata kavu. Rikata kavu.
In the name of Jesus.
Rikata kese kavu. Rikata kavu. Rikata keke buria. Rikata kavu. Kekatari avosonja.
In the name of Jesus.
Viewers all over the world.
Yes.
You are connected to the anointing of tonight, to anointing whereby there shall be a grace of multiplication and increase in your lives. I want to assure you that distance is never a barrier.
Amen.
Wherever you are connected from, I want you to understand that the grace that shall fall in this house tonight.
Oh yes.
Shall be able to locate you wherever you are of Jesus. You know every area in your life where you need multiplication. You know in your life where you need increase. I want you right now as you are connected to type every area that you need multiplication in your life.
Oh yes.
Funnies, I need multiplication in my business. And I'm believing tonight that that grace of multiplication shall fall in my business tonight in the name of Jesus.
Oh yes.
What can you say about this grace, funnies?
This is the day that God has provided enough and sufficient grace.
Oh yes.
You might be still a couple without kids.
Oh yes.
Tonight is your night. As you are watching me and I'm saying this, tonight is your night.
Oh yes. Oh, yes.
Dear ministries have been known for this grace of productivity.
Oh, yes.
Dear ministries has been known for this grace of multiplication.
Oh, yes.
So today, we are here to share this same grace with you. As you are typing, "I need children of my own", as you are typing, "God, grant me grace to reproduce, to multiply", as per your command, as tonight, the men of God, as you will come here and make some digressions. You must be prepared to receive that what belongs to you.
Dear ministries is a house of fruitfulness. This house is fruitful.
Yes.
So maybe there's a person who's listening to me right now, men of God. Maybe you were blessed with one child.
Yes.
And now you are trying to have another child up to no avail. I want you to understand that this prayer session of tonight is for you.
Amen.
There shall be a multiplication upon your children. So it means if you are having one child and you are looking for other children, automatically a multiplication is on your way tonight.
Amen. To add on to that, my men of God.
Oh, yes.
You might be working.
Oh, yes.
You have been working for the better half of your life.
Oh, yes.
For the greater part of life.
Oh, yes.
I am almost four decades old, over four decades old.
Oh, yes.
I have been working since eighteen years.
Oh, yes.
Up to today, I have been working and working. Maybe you are like me tonight. You need God to grant you that power to have ability to multiply financially.
Oh, yes.
You need that grace like me tonight to say, "God, I need financial stability." The Bible says, "My children shall not borrow, but they shall lend to people." Right? But we have been living from hand to mouth. I'm not alone in this one. You are part of that. We are alone in this house because people are working, trying to make survival. But tonight, the grace is sufficient to make sure that you will be able to replenish the little that you have. God is gonna make it last long. God is gonna make it multiply. Tonight is the night for you to receive the multiplication materially.
Men of God, you know, in this jain of life, there are people sometimes whereby they feel weak to pray.
Yes.
Sometimes their spiritual life can be down. I want you to understand that this prayer session of tonight, it is also for them.
Yes.
There is an increase that you need in your spirit to be uplifted spiritually. So it's not only about multiplication on these material things. Spiritually, you need an upliftment for you to be able to stand the ground and fight every battle.
Hallelujah. You know, as you're going before the Lord, you have triggered something in my, in my thinking.
Oh, yes.
You know, understanding is a gift.
Oh, yes.
Knowledge is also a gift.
Oh, yes.
We need to pray along the grace of God with the knowledge that Christ makes all things possible to those that believe in him.
Oh, yes.
So tonight, we wanna go before the Lord and say, "God, we are here. You have given us information. You have blessed us with this knowledge. You have exposed it to us. We need this. You know where you need it. As Pastor Simba have said earlier on, you might be needing kids, you might be needing this, you might be needing that. Just to pray and say, "As the man of God is gonna come tonight, as the apostle is gonna be praying for us, leading us in prayer tonight, God, grant me my portion."
Oh, yes.
Let us kneel down before the Lord and say, "God, I humbly come before you. God, I humbly give myself to you that you can reveal where I need multiplication most." As the priest team is gonna be leading us in a song softly, let us go before the Lord. Wherever you are in your house, maybe you are in a taxi, just bow down your head. Maybe you're at work, you are just trying something. Just say, "God, grant me this serenity. Let this city not go by." Just say, "God, allow your grace to touch my life. God, touch my life. God, God, I need you, I need you more, God." In the name of Jesus. We come before you, God. As your servant is gonna declare some things in our life. As your servant is gonna lead us tonight. God, grant us that understanding ability, increase the nature of our hearing that we can hear it and do that what matters, that we can understand as it is a gift from you, God. We pray, we pray, we come before you, God. Make us hear it and understand that the fruitfulness you have given in your word can be catalyzed, activated as thou willst. In the name of Jesus. We give ourselves, my God, before you. We give ourselves, God, that you only can multiply us, that you only can increase us in knowledge, that you only can increase us materially, that you only, you can increase us reproductively. In the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, we pray. In the name of Jesus. Oh, yes. Thank you, Jesus. Amen. As we are continuing with this session tonight, the men of God is in the studio with us.
Oh, yes.
Welcome you, Apostle, and how are you?
Ah, thank you so much. Greetings to you, viewers all over the world. I welcome you to this wonderful session with Pastor Simba and Pastor Michael. I hope you guys had a wonderful session in prayer. And I'm hoping that the Lord will share with us his grace of fruitfulness and multiplication.
Oh, yes.
And I'm hoping that the moment that I'm going to open my mouth to pray, there is gonna be an impartation of the grace that we carry in this house. Hallelujah.
Amen.
All right. I don't know where you are watching from. We are broadcasting live from.
Pretoria at number 255 Court Street, Pretoria West.
So that's where we are right now. And where are you watching from? Just tell us so that we can, we can know. We need to see where our viewers are connecting from. All right. Before we enter into prayer, there is something that I wanna, I wanna speak about, which is very, very important for, for the future, right?
Amen.
Something that is very important for the future. I just want you to open this scripture. Proverbs, chapter seventeen, verse seventeen. Let's open the book of Proverbs, chapter seventeen, verse seventeen. Proverbs seventeen, verse seventeen. What does it say?
In New King James, it reads, "A friend loveth at all times, and a brother is born for adversity."
A friend loves all the time, and a brother is born for a time of adversity or a time of problems or a time of need. Why am I bringing this topic? Because you guys, you are with me right now, right?
Yes.
This is not the best time to be with me. Listen to what the Bible is saying. Saying, "A friend must love all the times, even in the times of trouble."
Yes.
Not only when things are okay. Right? Then the brother is born for times of trouble. I am commenting on this because there've been several number of people who have been coming to my inbox concerning an issue that I commented on Facebook. There is a brother, a friend, somebody I know who is into, his name is Veco, right? So there are people who expressed their disappointments in my inbox, "Why are you supporting him? And why should you do that?" That's my scripture there, Proverbs, chapter seventeen, verse seventeen. "A brother loves at all times. Even if he had killed, I was gonna still stand with him. I was not gonna support the killing, but I was gonna support him. My brother, this is wrong, this is not right. But after all, may you pick up your broken pieces. Let's go."
Hallelujah.
You understand? So the brother is involved in, in the immigration and stuff. You see? So this, that, that area is very complicated. And the bigger problem with these guys who are into immigration, the accountability is a problem to them. Right? That's the biggest problem with the people are into. Uh, what do you call immigration, right? They help people process the visas, apply for visas, you want, you know, permits and so forth. So their biggest problem is accountability. Like when you come to them, they make it look like it's easy. They don't tell you that us, we help you apply, but we don't have an upper end in the processing of the papers because all they'll be valuing is money. "Don't worry, mama, we have a lot of testimonies." But remember, those testimonies are by luck or by chance. There are some you can apply for and they get rejected. So now, what happens to these guys when they apply for you and it fails? Yet they told you that, "Don't worry, we are the rouges in this."
Yeah.
They will not respond to your cause. I'm telling you the truth. That's how everyone who have dealt with people are into immigration. They will not answer or respond to your cause. Accountability, that's their bigger problem. And it's not like he's the first guy that I know. We had a lot of problems. I have my other guy, um, you know, People's General. You know, General, right? Short on.
Yes.
He's also my brother. We talk a lot, we advise each other. When he's stressed, he come to me when I'm stressed. I ca, I go to him. He always have issues with people concerning their documents and visas. I said, "Guys, it's wise to tell people in the beginning that us, we don't work in the warm affairs. We don't work at the embassies. We help you put up the needed documents. Then we help you apply. But the real power is in the hands of the embassy, is in the hands of the company, is in the hands of the country, is in the hands of whoever, not us. But because we need your money, when you are processing in the beginning, they'll be answering your calls. But when six months, seven months passes by, your documents have not been approved, they won't answer, accountability. So it becomes something like a scam." I, I actually have my guys, even you, when you are processing your papers, we actually had a problem with my other guy who was helping us. Remember, I told you how it operates, how it goes. But the guy was not responding to your calls. And unless, until I had to intervene. Even Pastor Ishu, when you're processing his papers, the same thing happened. Even Apostle Ngon, the same thing happened. So the guys are not accountable because a person will be, would have invested his money. And all they want is you to answer their call. You explain to them what's happening. Manje, these guys, after everything, when you are stranded and it's been months and months and nothing is coming out, you call them, they won't reply. You send them a text, they won't reply. But the moment when they were promising you that they can do this thing, they will be answering even a missed call. I don't know how they would do it.
Yeah.
That's their biggest problem. So in the eyes of people, it will look more like a scam. And on this one, I am not trying to say whatever case that is there is not a real case. Because remember, I was not with the guy. But I am standing with a brother, according to Proverbs, chapter seventeen, seventeen. I will never reject Veco because he did something wrong. Remember, God loved us as sinners.
Oh, yes.
Even if he's going to be given a jail sentence, I'll drive there to see him. And on behalf of him, I apologize to everyone who was inconvenienced by him. I know the pain that you are going through. I know how you feel. And I, 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 I'm very, very sure that it's a matter of accountability. You promise me, I give you money. Then when it's time, you don't really show up, even to just respond and tell me what's happening. But at the end of the day, I've seen all the celebrities, the socialites trying to run away to reject him like what Peter did. But I'm not a Peter. I'm not a Judas. I will still love my brother. He's a friend, he's a brother. I don't think I have ever ate his money and I don't want to, to receive anything from him. Remember, we are running our ministry smoothly, everything is going well. But he is a brother, he is a friend. Proverbs seventeen, verse seventeen. "A friend loves at all times, and a brother is born for a time of problems." So I'm here standing for the brother. All those people are rejecting him. Some of you, you benefited from him. You even received money from him and he never did anything against you. To the people to whom is accountable, please, if you wanna vent, vent. If you wanna shout, shout. If you wanna fight, fight. You have a right because this is your money. But the, all of the nation of Zimbabwe who are just wishing bad on the brother, it's a bad heart. Even God does not wish death on your worst enemy.
Amen.
So let the law take its course. And if you have some, if you have something to say, I know Botswana is a very solid system. So they will take the whole matter. You realize that when he comes back, all those people were rejecting him, they will delete those posts. And they ate his money. They were celebrating, being with him. But the time of trouble, nobody wanna be associated with your trouble. Why am I saying so? I am scared that you guys, one of the days, I'll be in trouble. And that's the day you begin to say, "Ah, we were seeing it and we were, we could not even tell him. If I'm bad, tell me now, I will correct. Don't wait for my bad day in the office." Then you begin to say, "Ah, we saw it, but we could not say something, he was a very stubborn guy. I am here, if there is something wrong, tell me now." Because I know that when a real day of trouble comes, Peter will run. Peter said to Jesus, "You know what? I will, I will, I will die with you." Until the guys say to, to him, "You were with him."
Yeah.
Peter realized that this is trouble following. Peter could not be with Jesus in his trouble. But all along for the three years, they were together. So you guys who are standing with me right now, saying, "Father, father, I am praying that you be not like the friends of Veco." Just to hear that you arrested, everyone is posting, everyone is posting negative. Nobody, so you mean that, that guy never did anything good? Where, where are those people to whom you did good? Where are they? Everyone is hiding because they don't want to associate their names with anything bad. They just want good only. Yet life comprises of good and bad. I'll stand on my feet and I'll tell you. If people are going to see me as bad for a brother, it's fine. Let them do. If people are going to hate me for the brother, let them do. I don't have a problem with him and even some other people are hating him. They are more sinful than him. Some of them, they did abortions, they killed people. Some of them are sleeping with, with guys they are not married to. Some of them are stealing at work. If God comes and judge, Veko, me and you, both of us will be judged. I'm not saying the process of the police must take place, but I'm saying me and you, we don't have a right to judge him. Let the police do their work, let God do his work. Because you and me, we are both sinners. Last but not least, I want you to think about this. Do you really know that most of the rape cases that are raised against pastors are not real rape cases? Do you know? Those cases, they will be like this. Pastors, I encourage you to stay away from women. If you are married, be faithful to your wife. If you are not married, marry. Because the biggest problem that is happening, you can't tell me that a person who is popular, a person, you know, you have been popular in this church. I can testify for you that there are people who just throw themselves to you, just being popular in this church. But imagine a person who is popular on a national level. Then you tell me that that person with all the ladies will be throwing themselves to him, he can forcefully sleep with somebody. And all these issues, if you look at them, they'll be dating to three years ago, four years ago, seven years ago and the person is reporting now. So what happens usually, I'm not saying there are no real rape cases. There are plenty pastors who actually raped. But most of these rape cases against people who are popular happens this way. Pastor Simba, you are married and you are popular. Then you decide to have an affair with a congregant. When you are doing your affair, she knows that you are married. You are giving her money, you are promising her, maybe I will leave my wife. One of the days, you will be the mother of this church and the woman is believing everything. Then you are tired of this one, you take another one and you take another one. So when this one sees that you are no longer giving her attention and when she realizes that you are also doing it to other girls in the church, she will feel like she is used. So that feeling can propel her to do anything. That's when after three years, they will go and create a case against you. They will say, pastor raped me. When they are asked now, they will begin to put it into like cases of manipulation. I was manipulated, I was like this, he told me no, but those things, most of the times, they will be lies. And the problem is the pastor, pastor will be not having proof because he was trying by all means to delete everything, everything. And the only voice which is powerful is from the woman. I'm not encouraging rape, there are pastors who are serial rapers. But there are plenty pastors who lost their control and began to do deals with the congregants. And after when, after, after the breakup, that's when the congregants realized, no man, I need to do something about and fix this person. It happens. Omotoso was arrested for eight years. I came to South Africa when he was arrested and this year is when he was released. And they said he is guilty, we could not find evidence of what the woman was saying. So you can, you, pastors, stay away from women. If you are married, stick to your wife. Stick to your wife. If you are not married, marry. If you don't want to marry, you are in trouble. One day, they will say, he raped us. They are hearing me. So a person can actually, actually go into the jail for things that he never did. Now I have a prophet that I know, a very popular one. And if that man of God is seeing this video, my prayer is that the Lord help him come out of what he is now involved in. So this man of God is very popular and big. And what he does, it's been a long journey of him womanizing, right? Some cases were coming up and because of money, they were, you know, they were just, yeah. So nowadays, man, he is now more dangerous. He is dangerous in this way. Before he goes to a girl, he has people who talk to the girl on behalf of him. So these are the people who are actually the sons who helps in recruiting the girls for Papa. So what happens now? Before you get into a relationship with Papa, Papa can notice you on Facebook and he sends his closer sons, did you see that fresh meat? Then the sons go and approach the lady, on behalf of what? Of Papa. Then the arrangement is done, but the first thing that needs to be done, we need a certificate, they need a certificate, they need what we call a stamp. You have to take your video naked, your pictures naked right round and make sure. So girls end up finding angles to expose themselves and make sure they showed Papa what they are carrying. So that video is not actually to arouse Papa. It's an evidence for in case, if you wanna rise against me, I will show the world your video.
So actually it's blackmailing.
They are scared of being blackmailed, so they will start by blackmailing you first. They will make sure they have something that, because plenty pastors, plenty pastors fall to this. You have a woman, you get into the hotel, you sleep, they take your videos. Konapo is Apostle Sean, who preached about righteousness. And that day, I've, the righteousness have visited heaven and flesh has overtaken me. I go into a hotel, we are enjoying with the lady and I'm asleep. So the lady will take the video, la, 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 you know, especially I'm a two K. Now, they won't tell you that we took a video until the day you decide to leave. They will show you, they will tell you that, it's fine, but I'm going to do this. Was you been giving the money, doing all this stuff and now? So the man of God has been in plenty scandals, sexual scandals, adultery scandals. So he realized that I want to go direct, I'll send my boys and my boys will come with the videos. And when we have the videos, that's when we can begin to deal. And these girls, some of them are younger to understand this. So if you just wanna say a word, they will send you a, a, a full gallery of your pictures and your videos and from there you will never say a word. So you be living in fear. There, I actually know about certain victims. But they are not victims because they chose to be into that. They are the ones who knew publicly that the man of God is married. And when the man of God approached, they accepted. So them and the man of God, all of them, all of them, they are victims, all of them, they are very wrong. So imagine such kind of a situation. So the bottom line, stay away from women. One day you'll be in trouble. And when you marry, don't marry the heart only. Marry also the face and the body. I'll say it again. When you're, when you're going to marry, if you want to marry the heart, you shall realize that the heart is very good for your relatives, your mother and the visitors who come, they need the heart a lot. Where now, it's a different story. Even a person who has an evil heart can still take care of you. But a person with an evil heart cannot entertain strangers. So long you are the husband, she will do the wife's duties, but being evil in the heart and satisfy you somewhere in the special area. So plenty people became cheaters, plenty pastors are cheaters because of marrying the heart. Who said God can't put a good heart on beautiful people? Who said God can't be, who told you that beautiful people have ugly hearts? Who said? So be sure about your decision. I know of pastors who told misthreat, said man of God have been married for fifteen years. Because I was asking about advices, about marriage. I was going from pastor to another. I realized that most of the pastors who are married, they are complaining about one thing. They made a mistake of listening to the spiritual philosophies whereby you have to look at the heart. Remember the one who looks, who looks at the heart is not you? It's God. Well now, you must look at what you see. I heard another pastor saying, ah, God, this one I have chosen the body and the face, the heart is with you, who knows, you fix it.
Again and again.
The heart is very important, but I'm, I'm saying, can you also pray for the heart to be on the right person? Because plenty, I spoke to my friends, I spoke to, I spoke to my seniors, all of them, they were telling, man of God, if you see a woman first love her. Because there is a moment when you can have a prayer warrior who, who can stand with the ministry but can't satisfy your nature needs. You look at her, you won't feel anything because you can relate to her. This mouth is just for praying, but ministry, everyone will be, will be helped with the mama. That is why you see some other pastors don't post their wives, you think it's privacy, no! They are not postable.
Today the studio is hot.
They are not postable, I'm telling you. Everyone, if the, the Bible said, who amongst you can have a lamp and put it under a bower? Who? It can never happen. Everyone who has, who has a lamp, who has the light, he put it on a table so that everyone can have light. Then he goes on to say, you are a city brute on the top of a mountain, you cannot be hidden. So you realize that plenty people are hiding their wives, you know? I'm like, I'm unlike other pastors who want to, to post their wives and, and put them on posters. I'm different, you are not different Papa, you are not proud of your wife. You chose the heart. Choose the heart. Yeah, pastor, don't just choose the heart. Even, not only, guys, I've seen there are daughters who are coming here, some who are coming here, who are married. But if you look at their Facebook profiles, TikTok profiles, you will see their pictures and videos and kids. You will never find their husbands there. The day they will fight with the husband and the husband decides to come to church, you will be shocked. It's a big stomach like this and a girl is a two K. So you realize that the reason why she always post the baby and herself, she's, she doesn't want people to see the big stomach. So girls go for money and stability, please, there is no problem for you to go after a man you admire. That is why you are cheating with your high school exes and you are Christians. It is because there you went for stability, comfort, but Ubaaba is unpostable. Look, there are plenty people are looking at me right now. You can never find their husbands on Facebook. Never lie to us that you are protecting them. If you are protecting them, right? If you protect your husband from Facebook witches, how can you love your husband more than yourself? You are posting yourself. You are posting your child. Okay, so if you can't post your husband and you post your parents, you mean that you don't love your parents? You are exposing them to the witches you are scared of, it's a lie. You are embarrassed because of your, your, your choice. Choose wisely, all the girls who are not yet married. If you are going to choose money, be sure that you shall be satisfied with that man forever. If you are going to choose stability, be sure that you shall be proud of that stability. On Valentine's Day, we don't want people who just send inbox messages to their husbands. We wanna see love all over. Happy Valentine's, my king. Konapo king is unpostable Baba. Short piece like this, mkaa five meters Baba. I'm not body shaming, but that's your big problem. Okay, let me keep silent. You know, there are some other people who are short and having mkaa. They will be like, you are body shaming us. So I think for today, as of, of this issue, I am done. We wanna pray now. Teach wise. Okay. Jehovah is your name. Jehovah is your name. Jehovah is your name. Jehovah. Jehovah is your name. Mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. Great in battle. Jehovah is your name. Mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. Great in battle. Jehovah is your. Ebarakana, mighty warrior. Kenamaya no lebarana neyaka ne. Jehovah, Jehovah. Kenemorabado shekepada mokaya naka. Your name. Mighty warrior. Oye manabaya rokobode maya. Lift up your hands and worship him right now. Ema yana no she nebo kaya. Nebareka na na ne nebo yane. Mighty, mighty, mighty. Mighty warrior. You are great in battle. Jehovah, Jehovah. One maya kana maloka yana. Your name. Mighty warrior, mighty warrior. Ebarre manabaya ko she neba. Jehovah, Jehovah. Lift up your hands in worship, it's important. Say, mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. You are great in battle. Olabaya nama moyeka nama reka nama. Oye bakana ma. Mighty warrior, mighty, mighty warrior. Mighty warrior. Jehovah, Jehovah. Wherever you are, lift up your hands in worship. Lebaro beka na, mighty warrior. Kenamaya na moyeka rana no ne. Jehovah, Jehovah Baba. Kalaba roko ne mana ma roko debe bo shakana. Open up your mouth and begin to pray right now. Kelebarana no kenaka shebebe akosha. If you haven't prayed yet, you need to begin to pray right now. It's a moment to worship his name. Say words to the living God. Olebarana ne kaya nama. Glory be to the living God. Jehovah, Jehovah. Karaba no ko shepa tala supma. Sheka no barre de bo su. Kelebo rakana bo shakana. Yeah, 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 kana ne.
You fight our battle.
Oye ma re kana ma sa ne ke na. Jehovah, Jehovah, Jehovah. Oleba ya ne kaya ma re kana. Shekenema sukana. Pe ne buji sa pa vebiya ta ne. Ke ye bo re kana bo su to ko pa. Sheketi para ko no bo se mahai. Ni bo re kana bo shakana dos. Worship his holy name, worship his holy name. We love Jesus. Ke kalaba ranane maya kana ne ne. Jehovah. Ye Baba ya ne. Keleba ranama shakana. If you love Jesus, wherever you are right now, begin to worship his name. Begin to worship his name. If you love Jesus, if you love the Holy Ghost, it's a moment of worship. It's a moment of worship. It's a moment of worship. Keleba ya no lebarakana bo sa. We love you, Lord. We love you, Lord. O sa na ne na na ya ne. Re na bo ko shakana. O na ma ye ma re na. Oye ma sa ne na. Jehovah, 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 Jehovah. Ke ne ma rakana ma ne ke ne me shakana. Ulibarakan to ne maya ko re na na ne. Sheken proka sa to liya ka. Abba Father, take all the glory. Jehovah, Jehovah. Worship his name. Lift up your hands in worship. Tell him that he's wonderful. Tell him that he's holy. Tell him that you love him. Oleba ya na ne sa kaya. Re ma no ko shepa to liya kana. Se ne ma. Se ne ma. Oye ma kana. I love you, Lord. I love you, Lord. I love you, Jesus. I worship you. I worship you. You are the king. You are the king. Oleba ya ka za na bo ko. Kelebo shakana. Ike rebo yo shapiya ka. Keze barakana dos. Kize barule ke shakana. Malako toba ri. Ko shiba ko sosi kina. Yoko ta ya ko shima. Te barakos. Oh my God! Let's worship. Wherever you are, don't just worship like you are watching TV. It's a prayer network, somebody need to pray now and worship the name of the living God. Let's worship him. Let's worship him. Let's worship him. You wanna say this? You wanna say this? Kalaba shakana. Choka nama siya so. If you love him, wherever you are, I want you to lift up your hands right now and tell him this. Ni yaku tanta.
Oh yes.
Mo ya fele.
Oh yes.
Mo ya fele. Mo ya fele. In Shona we say. Ti no ku na i. We ya mu chene.
Hey!
We ya mu chene. We ya. Siya ku tanda. Siya ku. Oye ma rakana. Mo ya mu le bo bo ya. Oh ya fele. Yeah, 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 yeah. Oh ya fele. Siya ku tanda, Baba. Lift up your voice. Siya ku tanda. Ti ya ku tanda. Mo ya. Oh ya fele. Mo ya. From the bottom of our hearts, from the deepest places in our hearts, tell him, tell him. Siya ku tanda, Baba. Ti ya ku tanda. Of course, of course, siya ku tanda. Liara ne bo shakana ma. Yeah, yeah. Oleba ya na no sheke ba. Lebarreka ne ne bo sa. Open up your mouth and worship his name. Oleba reka. Siya ku tanda, Baba. Re mayana. Of course, of course, of course, ya sa suwe. Ye ma re ne ne bo yaka. Yeah, yeah. Oh yeah. Bo re kana ma ya lo shakana. So de la barriaka ne 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 na yo. If you love me, open up your mouth. Ti ya ku tanda. Siya ku tanda, Baba. Oh ya. Ye la ba ya ra. Ne ke ne sa, ya ne sa. Oleba ya ne. Lift up your hands, somebody. Let's worship his name. Ariaka ne. Oh, oh yeah. Na ne na ya na. Ti ya ku tanda. Siya ku tanda, Baba. Oh ya. Oh ya, oh yeah. Oh ya kares. Se ne maya ne. Oh ya. Say this from the deeper places of your heart. Ti no ku na i. We ya mu chene. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We ya. If you love him, open up your heart and say this. Tell him that you love him. Tell him that you love him. Open up your mouth right now and begin to pray. Sa na makayane so. Kalaba ranana bakayane sen dana. Ke riada sheba roko sa taka. Ri na ne ba sa zebekaniya she. Bo re kana siya. Wo riya ne ne bo shaka ne ne bakavika. Bo re ne ne bo sa ka. Ka sa ta re ke ne ne bo shaka. Open up your mouth. Open up your mouth.
Holy Spirit, we love you. Holy Spirit, we love you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for washing over us.
Thank you for giving us. Na ne, na ne, ne re barakana bakayana. Re 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 riya kana. Worship his holy name. Open up your mouth and worship his name. Open up your mouth and worship his name. Ye re bo riya kama zoba.
Thank you for sowing us your grace.
Wherever you are, lift up your hands in worship and tell the Holy Spirit that you love him. Tell him words from the deeper places of your heart. Right now, tell him that you love him. Have a moment of intimacy with him. Everyone who can be intimate with him receives his nature. There is power in worship, especially the intimate one. When you take out yourself from your original position and position yourself in the realms of the spirit. This is where I want you to go right now. Open up your mouth and say, "Holy Spirit, here I am, I love you."
I love you, Holy Spirit.
Oleba ya na les karriya tetemos.
I adore you, Holy Spirit.
Na lakosheban wa deke siya sema. Wa rigede de ba sha kiza. Samia tata. Ri eke de 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 si na na. Ra kade de bo shaka. Ne re. Wa ye ke re ba sa talamo bo. Ni ne ba siya keleba ka. Wa rakana bo siya. Ni ke ra de de bo siya ne bo. Wa ta fi ke se se bara. Uwa biaka.
We love you, Jesus. And we lift your hands before you. We love you, my Lord. Thank you for being here for us. We love you, Jesus. Holy Spirit, Holy Spirit. We love you, Jesus. You are so gracious. We love you, my Lord. You're so wonderful. You are the camp for us in our heart spirit. We adore you, my Father. You are the cure for every journey. Abba Father, we love you. You sign upon us when things are full of rough. Abba Father, we love you.
We reka ne bo. Wa na.
We honor you, my Lord.
Wa arba de ne bo sa.
We honor you, my Lord.
Re ke de bo. Wo riya ne ne ba. Riya ke de ba.
We raise your name on high. Take all the glory, my Jesus. Your name is above. Take all the glory, my Lord. Thank you, Holy Spirit, for being there for us. We love you. We love you and glorify your name. We love you, Lord God Almighty. You have been there from the beginnings. You have been hovering over our lives, directing us to the will of the Father. Thank you, Holy Spirit, we love you.
Let's lift up our hands. Just say in your heart, "I love you," in silence. Just say in your heart, "Holy Spirit, I love you." Tell him that you love him. Tell him words from the deepest, poor places in your heart. Tell him, "I want you in my life." Tell him that you are important. Tell him to never leave you. Tell him, "He is beautiful, he is wonderful, the wonderful counselor." I wonder if this life that we live, if we did not have the Holy Spirit, what were we gonna be, some of us? We made a lot of wrong decisions and he still came and picked us up from the dust and put us on these places that we are standing. It's not by our goodness, it is because of the love that he has for us. There are a lot of people of your age who are graves now. They never saw things that you are seeing right now. There are a lot of people who travels by the same roads you traveled through. They had accidents and when now you are still living and surviving, it is the love of the Holy Spirit. Tell him that you are important in my life. Without you, I can't exist. I've been living a life sometimes. In his absence, I saw how dangerous it is. Holy Spirit, take over our lives. Purify us. Make us clean. Give us direction and lead us through the right ways so that we can be representatives of what is right. Lift up your hands and tell him how much you love him. If you can't have intimacy with him, I can see his glory all around us because of a certain environment that we are creating for him, an environment of intimacy. Wherever you are, open up your heart and tell him that you love him. He is precious, he is the God who is ever loving. Personally, if I look at the times that I've been unfaithful to him and he still proved to be faithful in all of my shortcomings, he is a very beautiful God. The God who forgives, the God who loves forever. Without Jesus, who are we? Without the Holy Spirit, who are we? Who are we really, who are we? We can walk in the paths which are leading us to death. We can walk in the paths which are leading us to the jails. But because of his unwavering love, we are standing here. You are not standing there because you are important. He chose to make you one. Open up your mouth and say, "Father, I am an orphan, but I survived. I grew up poor, but I survived. It was your eye which was looking at me and it was saying, 'Live, it was saying, 'Live.'" I love him, I love him, I appreciate him. Thank you so much, Holy Ghost. We love you. We cherish every moment that we stand in your holy presence, praying unto you. It changes our lives.
Oh, yes.
It changes our thoughts. It changes how we see things. It changes our mentality. You are so beautiful. You are so wonderful. The wonderful counselor, the God who lives forever. Oh, glory be unto the name of the living God, in Jesus' name. Let's lay a pen for Jesus.
Oh, yes.
Give me this scripture. Ezekiel chapter sixteen, verse six. Ezekiel two. Ezekiel chapter sixteen, verse six.
I read in NKJV, Ezekiel chapter number sixteen, verse six. "And when I passed by thee and saw thee polluted in thine own blood, I said unto thee, 'When thou wast in thine blood, leave.' Yeah, I said unto thee, 'When thou wast in thine blood, leave.'" 11:7?
It's fine. "I saw you sleeping in your blood and I said to you, 'Live.'" The word "live" was enough to transform Israel. I want somebody to pray and say, "God, may you announce fruitfulness and multiplication over my life." Because I know that if your word is sent to the earth, it won't come back to you void. I want you to pray and say, "God, remember me by just speaking a word over my life. I want fruitfulness over my life." Open up your mouth right now and begin to pray. Open up your mouth and begin to pray and say, "Father," say a word. "I want fruitfulness, I want multiplication. I want fruitfulness, I want multiplication." Open up your mouth. You must be fruitful in whatever you touch. You must be fruitful in whatever you try. You must be fruitful wherever you go, in the mighty name of Jesus. When God says something upon your life, it transforms your life forever. Open up your mouth. Say, "Father," say a word. Say, "Father," say a word. Say, "Father," say a word. Your word is enough. Your word is enough. If you say, "Receive it," I'll receive it. If you say, "Take it," I'll take it. If you say, "Multiply," I'll multiply. If you say, "Receive a job," I shall receive. If you say, "Be healthy," I shall be healthy. If you say, "Grow," I shall grow. You said to Israel, "Live," and he lived. He was parting his plant. But you came over, my Father, and said a word. And Israel is still living up to now. It is all because of you. It is all because of your word. We are praying right now, my Father, that you may say a word upon our lives. We wanna grow. We wanna multiply. We wanna grow. We wanna multiply. We wanna grow. We wanna multiply. Oh, God! You said to Adam and Eve, "Be fruitful and multiply." May you say those words upon my life. I wanna be fruitful. I wanna multiply. 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 Open up your mouth right now. Open up your mouth right now. Kalaba roka pas. Leba roko pas sete. Si makato shaki alus. Makya sun si barako shebebe. Say, "I wanna multiply." Make me fruitful. I wanna multiply. Make me fruitful. I wanna multiply. Open up your mouth and begin to pray. Say, "God," just say, "A word." I don't need. I don't need much from you. Because I know that by your word, I can be transformed. By your word, I can grow. By your word, I can be transformed. By your word, I can multiply. By your word, I can be fruitful. By your word, I can be powerful. By your word, I can reach a job. By your word, I can have a child. By your word, I can receive a job. By your word, my company may be opened. By your word, my visa may be approved. By your word.
I wanna.
Open up your mouth. 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 When you are holding your phone, once you are holding your phone, open up your mouth right now. Say, "God, I wanna be fruitful." Just say a word. Just say a word. Just say a word. Once you say it, it shall be done.
Say a word over me my Lord. Announce a word over my life.
I want you to have faith that God can say a word upon your life. Nakoreba shatakasi. Lakarane sumaha. Shekepatalo sopapa. Shimana go shea lo.
I wanna be fruitful.
Open up your mouth. 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 Is that moment?
Say a word.
Is that season? Is that hour? Open up your mouth.
Say a word my Father.
Open up your mouth.
Say a word my Lord.
Open up your mouth.
I wanna be fruitful. I wanna multiply. Say a word, say a word. Say a word over my life.
Anounce it, announce it. Ke le ba ra de shampiakasu. Ta le me ya kusuma kapaa. Shebe bo karana. Child of Giam. Open up your mouth and pray. Child of Giam. Open up your mouth and pray. Child of Giam. Open up your mouth and pray. Say, "Father." Upon my life. Say a word. Upon my health. Say a word. Upon my finances. Say a word. Upon my family. Say a word.
I wanna be fruitful.
Kalaba ye ma la ma ye.
Say a word my Father.
Manama ye.
Say a word my Lord.
Listen to me.
Say a word my Jesus.
Out of your mouth, there is a power of heaven life. But I advise you to choose life. I want you to lift up your right hand everyone. Say, "Lord, I lift up this hand to you. Sanctify it. Make it holy. Sanctify it. Make it holy. Right now. Put that hand over your head and begin to speak words over your life. Say you are fruitful. Say you are powerful. Begin to say words right now.
In the mighty name of Jesus. I am fruitful. I am fruitful. I am powerful.
Declare words upon yourself. Say, "I am fruitful. I shall multiply. I am fruitful. I shall multiply. I shall grow. I shall increase. 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 I shall grow."
I am powerful.
Open up your mouth.
I shall grow.
Open up your mouth.
I shall expand. I am powerful.
Open up your mouth.
I am powerful.
Open up your mouth. Declare words upon yourself. Say, "I am a challenge. I am big. I shall multiply. I shall grow. I shall not be the same. I am not that small. I am that big. In the name of Jesus."
I shall expand in the name of Jesus.
Oh my God.
Expansion in the name of Jesus.
You are fruitful. You are fruitful. You shall multiply. You shall grow. You shall be big. You shall be merry. You shall marry. You shall improve. You shall start a business. You shall go overseas. You shall have your own church. You shall be a leader. You shall be a president. Thousands shall follow you. You shall be respected. Whatever you shall declare on earth shall be declared in heaven. Whoever you bless shall be blessed. Whoever you curse shall be cursed. Whatever you touch shall be successful. Wherever you go, you shall flourish. Multitudes of money shall follow you. Multitudes of blessings shall follow you. Good marriage shall follow you. Happiness shall follow you. A wedding over your life. A wedding over your life. Multiplication over your life. Fruitfulness over your life. You shall grow. 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 You shall be a millionaire. You shall be a millionaire. What they never did in your family. You are the first one to do it. I declare, I decree. God has loved the Lord, live it. You shall prosper. You shall be respected. You shall be honored. The impossible shall become possible. Everything that opposes you, the Lord shall oppose it. Everything that has been closing your doors, it shall open in the name of Jesus. You shall be bigger than who you are today. You shall cross borders in the name of Jesus. I declare this over your life. In the mighty name of Jesus. Now, I want you to think about something that you want the Lord to do for you. Those who are in the comment section, you will write them in the comment section. As you be writing, I will be praying from this holy altar. I'll be praying, I don't care where you are. You are in Africa, you are in Europe, Asia, whichever continent you are. I'm gonna pray for you and the Lord shall do as you asked. In my name, you shall ask anything and I shall do it. Come. Dear Father, by the name of Jesus, I pray for the individual who is watching me at this moment. I declare and I decree, I stand in the anointing of Elijah, who was able to stop the rain and make it come when he wanted. I declare and I decree that the wish of your heart is going to be fulfilled by the name of Jesus. Whatever you are writing in the comment section, whatever you are writing in your heart, I declare and I decree that you shall receive it by the name of Jesus. I pray for your family. I pray for your business. I pray for your health. I pray for your marriage. I pray for your relationship. I pray for everything that you are looking for. I declare that in seven days' time, some of those things, you shall see them materializing in the mighty name of Jesus. If you are looking for a job, congratulations. I open up opportunities everywhere. I open up opportunities everywhere. May your CV be remembered by the name of Jesus. I declare and I decree that the next time you are going for an interview, you shall receive that job, you shall be favored by the name of Jesus. I pray for you who is running business. Whatever business that you are running right now, if things are not moving well in that business, I call clients for you by the name of Jesus. In the name of Jesus, may clients follow you. May clients look for you. May clients hunt for you. I declare and I decree over your life, everyone who is barren, I declare you fruitful. Everyone who is looking for a child, I pray for you right now. Let breakthrough locate you. Next year, by this time, you shall be having a child. If you are thinking of starting a company, may you go and do it. May the Lord open up doors in the mighty name of Jesus. Those who are looking for financial breakthrough, I declare financial breakthrough upon your life. If you are sick, every sickness in your body, I cancel it. Whatever the doctors failed to heal, may the Lord Jesus heal you right now by the name of Jesus. Whatever desire of your heart, I pray for you right now. Receive it in the name of Jesus. I declare and I decree, as a man of God standing on this altar, you are going to receive whatever you are praying for. Whenever you are going to kneel down, asking for anything, the Lord shall do it for you in the mighty name of Jesus. Those who are being troubled by demons, any kind of demon, unmarried spirits, married spirits, ancestral spirits, snake spirits, witchcraft spirits, I command you to live in the mighty name of Jesus. I command you to live in the mighty name of Jesus. Every sickness that is demon-related, I command you to leave your body by the name of Jesus. I command you to come out of you by the name of Jesus. Everyone who is demon-possessed, right now by the name of Jesus, come out! By the name of Jesus, every demon in your body, I command you to come out in the mighty name of Jesus. Come out! Move! Move! Come out! Go! 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 I paralyze every weapon of the devil in your life. May you be free and be set free from all the powers that are making you struggle in your marriage, in your health, in your family, in your business, and every area in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Let's lay a pen for Jesus. Right now, as we are closing, we shall give Pastor Simba to give us one praise song as we close. Right, thank you so much, family of Giam. May the Lord bless you. Take your stage, sir.